The Oshkosh Council Meeting of October 9, 2018. Would the city clerk please take the role?
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present six.
Would you all please stand while Councilmember Herman leaves us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank our student for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, who has a certificate for you, a couple of questions for you.
Your name, where you go to school, and your favorite subject?
My name's Callan Balki. I go to Oshkosh West High School, and my favorite subject would have to be my AP Gov. class.
What is that?
AP Government and Politics.
You're in the right place.
Now, you can stay for the meeting and learn about local government, or you can go home and study. It's up to you. Thank you. First on the agenda is citizen statements to the council. Citizens are to address the council only, statements only to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh, and the Council may add address at a future meeting. Must not include endorsements of any candidates or other reelectioneering. Pam, has anyone signed up?
Yes, we have John Steinhilber, 340 Northwest Haven Drive.
Come forward, speaking microphone, please.
At our annual condo association meeting, bike lanes were brought up. While we're not against bike riders themselves, the idea of having bike lanes on a busy street like West Haven between Whitsel Ave. and Highway 21 doesn't seem like a good idea. You are directing bikers towards Highway 21 or Whitsel Ave., which are even busier than West Haven. But our real objection is no parking on our side of the street. The west side of Northwest Haven is mainly apartments which can have off-street parking, while the east side of West Haven is mainly condos and private homes. I would think that one of the basic rights of taxpayers would be parking in front of your place. We can't have rummage sales parties or company because we have no place for them to park. In the summer, we had a picnic, and the people parked on the lawn as it was dry enough not to damage the lawn. Another point would be to allow parking in the winter, as no bikes would normally ride in the winter because of ice, snow, et cetera. From November through March would be reasonable. I know all property owners got a letter from the city, and apparently no one showed up to complain about the bike lanes. I think until they went in, we had no idea of the impact this would have on our right to park in front of our buildings. And for your information, we have few bikes using the lanes, but we have a lot of cars moving faster than the posted speed of 25. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe you signed, gave a city clerk a petition.
Yes, she did.
Okay.
The petition was filed.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Collins is here.
Jim Collins is here. Deputy Mayor Paul Mary?
If I could ask someone to read what the petition is asking, I'm not sure.
We, the undersigned petition, the City of Oshkosh, to remove the bike lanes on the east side of Northwest Haven Drive between Whitsel Avenue and Highway 21. We feel that having bike lanes on the west side of Northwest Haven Drive is sufficient as the west side consists mainly of apartment buildings which have their own parking. We have no parking on the street which consists of several condos and private homes.
Thank you.
Mr. Herman, did you want to?
Yeah, I'm just making a comment that with Mr. Council, maybe that can get put back on the agendas for the bike and pedestrian and parking, traffic parking, just for discussion, since we do have a petition signed by citizens.
I guess that's up to what the council would like to do. The, just for the historical reference, those bike lanes, I did talk to, I don't know if I talked to her, but one of the residents had called me, and I explained that these bike lanes were put in, it was like June 2017, I want to say. So they've been there for over a year, and they are part of the council-approved bike and pedestrian plan that was approved in 2011. So that went through the Traffic Review Advisory Board, and then ultimately council passed that, you know, well over a year ago. So I don't know what your direction is to staff. Alexa's here, she's the representative for the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, but I'm not sure exactly what you want to do. I mean, it's, it's long been implemented, so, and to reverse that direction, we could, but we'd have to remove all those bike lanes, which would be quite a task.
Mr. Mayor, this is citizen statements, certainly if the council wants to give us direction for a future meeting. We have a period at the end of the agenda that council can give us that direction.
All right, let's do that.
And certainly entertain direction from the council.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to consent agenda items. These are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, does anyone register to speak to any items on the consent agenda?
No one is registered.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
There were no items removed. The consent agenda, we'll move on to pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 18-508, adopt City of Oshkosh comprehensive plan to update 2040. Pam?
No one is registered.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for motion in a second.
Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance 18-509, approve zone change from central mixed-use district CMU to two-flat residential-10 in periments TR-10 District 22, 222 West 8th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
We have two new ordinances. There will be no formal action taken on the first two. The first is ordinance 18-510, approve zone change from institutional imperiums I to corporate business park with planned development overlay imperiums CBP-PD, close periments Outlot 1 and 2 of Certified Survey Map 7398, 1400 block of North Kohler, Kohler Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone register to speak to this at all?
No one registered.
I'll move on to ordinance 18-511, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district imperiums SMU, close periments to neighborhood mixed-use district with a planned development overlay imperiums NMU-PD, close periments at 3485 Lake Buttermore Drive, and Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 18-512, modify parking regulations on Oregon Street, both sides between 8th Avenue and 16th Avenue, and staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. If we want to rate the rules, I believe we need a motion. Mr. Peck?
I would move, based on staff recommendation, to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
We will vote on ordinance 18.
I'd move for approval of 18-512. Second.
Discussion? Councilman Mugrower?
Well, first, we didn't open this up to see if there's anybody who wanted to speak to this. Was there anybody who wanted to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Okay, thank you. I guess, Mr. Collins, I think is there, Mr. Godey's there. First, and Mr. Robby's back there, I think, too, I think I saw him. First, I got to say thank you, two things. One, taking the concerns with 7th and 8th Street, a little bit off topic, but still definitely abuts this, doing the temporary repair, doing some overlay on 7th and 8th part of Oregon, much appreciated. I've gotten a couple of comments from some of the business owners right in that area as well. And two, after the last council's meeting, it was good to see staff immediately working with, with the business owners, right outside the halls of this council chambers. That was a good thing to see. That's, that's how it's supposed to work. But I'm disappointed that we come back with adding four. I think we, we were, we were pretty clear last week with, at least several of us were, with more parking spaces, and this particular proposal only adds four in front of, basically between the 8th and 9th Street block, and addresses no other block of Oregon Street, and that's disappointing to hear. I understand that there was a few businesses, a few business owners from, from that meeting that were here that expressed their concern, but others have expressed concern to us throughout that, that space. I guess, can you give us some, some information as to why we only are seeing the addition of four spots in a one-block radius?
Sure, I mean, I can answer our Steve Ken, but basically, that was the only concerns we've heard. We haven't heard from anyone else. You know, we had the business owner meeting, and basically, it was the businesses between 8th and 9th that expressed concerns, and then at the last council meeting, it was the businesses between 8th and 9th that expressed concerns. We have not heard of concerns from other businesses in that area. So that was, I guess, what, what we focused on when we looked at the revised parking regulations.
It really was. It was trying to deal with balancing the safety and then increasing the parking between there. Where we had heard the most concern for the parking in the area that was the most heavily reduced was the block between 8th and 9th. The blocks to the south of that all had at least four stalls on one side, was the greatest reduction, which would have been the west side between 9th and 10th is the other block that had a substantial reduction from original, but did still have four stalls on that block face. In addition to, it has the public parking lot immediately on the backside of that lot. So trying to balance the safety and where the primary concerns were for adding the parking, this was the compromise that we're recommending to come forward with, to add the parking where it truly was reduced significantly down to one stall on each side between 8th and 9th, and then trying to keep the truck-turning movements and safety as well as, as good as we can to the rest of the project.
It'll be, I guess it'll be interesting to hear what my, my fellow council members have, have to say on this one, but it's not enough. We lost 21 spots total through the whole, through that particular stretch. It'll be interesting to see what we lose from south of South Park down to the 16th area, if, if and what we lose down there. But it's not enough being added back to help all the business owners on that entire stretch of that street that's being redone, so I'll, I'll yield back.
Councilman Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I look at the analysis in this, staff did work with the group, and the group apparently agreed that four parking stalls on each side was sufficient to what they needed. None of the business owners are here tonight concerned about the change in the ordinance. So I think, I think, you know, we've worked with the businesses, we heard the businesses, and I'm going to support redoing, putting those four parking stalls back. I know we talked about, I think it was 8 and 13, and a compromise in the middle, but that was, but with staff working with it right away that night and talking to those owners, I think we've come to decent compromise. And, and safety's a big one, because this is a truck route. We talked about that. I know the mayor has stressed it numerous times about the safety, and we have an obligation to our citizens to make the streets as safe as possible, too. And so, you know, there are three parking lots within a pretty close radius, and I know a couple of businesses said that that's too far away for them, but now we're adding two more on each side of the street, so I think it's, it's a good compromise. So I'll support it. Thank you.
Mr. Roloff?
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, I can ask staff, in terms of the reductions, that is the entire length from 8th to 16th. There will be no additional reductions, is that correct?
There were no marked parking stalls south of South Park Avenue before the project. There will not be afterwards. It's simply on-street parking as you can fit vehicles in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no other council members wishing to discuss this ordinance, so would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Present.
Mugrower?
No.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried four, one no, one present.
We have one new resolution, which is Resolution 18-513, approve third amendment to tax incremental District Number 31 Development Agreement with Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc. And I should mention, this, this was approved by the RDA at their October 1st meeting, the vote was five to zero, so. Did anyone sign up from the public? I didn't forget you, Pam, I was just reading my notes.
No one is registered.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
No.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 5-1.
We're now at the point of council discussion, direction to City Manager, and future agenda items. The first is future workshops. A is budget workshops, 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 October 29 and 30, 2018, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, both days in Room 404, which is adjacent to this room. And we have a budget hearing November 7, 2018, at 5:00 PM, same room, Room 404. It's a budget workshop, joint meeting with Long Range Finance Committee. It will follow up the budget hearing. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had requested that the, the joint meeting between the Long Range Finance Committee and the council as the committee chair, last week, the Long Range Finance Committee proposed, it proposed a recommendation that was six, six ayes, no opposed, one present, to institute a $30 vehicle registration fee, which would eliminate some special assessments, but not all special assessments for street construction. So I thought, as this had something to do with our budget and moving forward, that we would put this on the agenda and have a joint meeting with the Long Range Finance Committee and the council.
Right, thank you. C is a class and comp city workshop on October 23rd this year at 5:00 PM. Have we picked a location, or?
We're just requesting this, we didn't put this on a previous agenda, Carlson Detmond, the firm that does our class comp, this is an update, this isn't a full-blown redo of it, it's an update, and they would like to report back to council. It's not going to have a significant impact on the budget, anything in there is, we'll be able to absorb, but it's appropriate that we, we bring it back to council for, for review and approval.
Thank you.
I just wanted to note that the October 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 25th, I may be out of town for work requirements, so I may, it's tentatively right now, tentatively planned, but, so I will, if that happens, I will be, I will miss the October 22nd council meeting as well as this workshop on the 23rd.
Yeah, the council meeting's on the 23rd, and we will make, our goal is to have you this report by this Friday, anyway, so if you have any questions, certainly feel free to give us a call. Mr. Fitzpatrick will be available for any questions that you might have.
Next, we have item D, which is a strategic plan. Mr. Roloff, I guess?
Our goal is to bring the strategic plan for council at the October 23rd meeting. You should have gotten a copy of the, the most recent update for you to review and comment on. It pretty much reflects what the council had talked about at their, their day-long retreat, actually two day-long retreats over the summer. So certainly welcome any feedback, again, Mr. Fitzpatrick or I can chat with you about anything. If you get into a detail within a specific area, there are staff, department head leads on that, I encourage you to call them as well, because they're the ones who, who really know the, the ins and outs of those individual plans. But we'll be prepared to have that on the agenda on October 23rd.
Okay, thank you. I shouldn't, I mentioned Mr. Balki there, if you have any questions after the meeting, we'll, most of us should be here to answer any questions you should have.
Okay, thank you.
Council discussion is discuss municipal facts 18 report, which includes financial metrics for nine comparable communities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got to just pull this up.
It looks like we're kind of smack dab in the middle of most of them.
Well, that's kind of the idea, but Mr. Herman and I spoke about this, and he thought there were a couple of real intriguing facts that would be appropriate to point out. Council had received a copy of this in the September 14th newsletter, and it's things that I think we've shown by staff in the past, and this is really more of a, sort of a confirmation from an independent body about where that is. I'm really just going to draw to your attention three pages from this report. The first one is from page three of the report, and that does a comparison with nine peer communities, and in this case, it's police and fire spending. And while the, the number for ambulance, or fire ambulance looks higher than the average, not all things are equal in the, in these comparisons. A lot of fire departments don't provide ambulance service, those are provided separately, a separate cost, so they are not necessarily reflected in there. So our cost of ambulance service is offset by ambulance revenue. Even though I keep complaining, and the chief keeps complaining, and Ms. Larson keeps complaining about the revenues, they are offset. So even though we're towards the higher end, we're actually very competitive when you consider that we have, we have ambulance service. For example, Appleton does not, I don't believe Eau Claire does either, so just gives you an idea of what the comparison is. On the other hand, police and the expenditures of our peer communities, we are the lowest on expenditures for police. I know that's no surprise to council, we've had these discussions before, and as you have the 2019 budget in your, in your possession now, you'll be looking at those types of things, and, and we're going to be talking about police and fire in terms of strategic plan goals, as well as direction the council gave me to look at financing options, and we've got some capacity built into the 2019 budget for you to consider different options. So that's the first one. The next page, as you go down on page four of this report, are property taxes and shared revenues. And I know property taxes are, are not popular, nobody likes to pay them, I don't like paying them, but they're, they're something that is a fact of life for local government in Wisconsin. If you take a look at this report, we are the second lowest of our peer communities in their property tax levy, so that gives you an idea. Now, some of that can be a little misleading, because higher property tax areas, you know, they can generate more than necessarily we can, because they have more value, but we're, we're living within our means, and so we are amongst the lowest and the second lowest in our peer group. Meanwhile, shared revenue, we're a little higher than the average, and the reason for that, and you know, if you read my budget message, it's pretty scathing about the shared revenue program, and I, I stand by those words. Because of our low property tax per capita, we get a higher shared revenue payment, but we're still getting little to no growth, as our peer communities are. So we're kind of in the same boat as this goes, because shared revenue is based on somewhat of a need basis, so because our property tax doesn't generate as much as other communities, we get a little more on the shared revenue side. And then finally, the last one is our GO debt, and, you know, some of these aren't always the most flattering, and this is one where we definitely have a weakness. We are the second highest in our peer group for general obligation debt. We've relied on that for a lot of TIF. We aren't doing that as much anymore, but we're still up there, and the numbers that are getting prepared and compared in this report are 2016, so you'll see that our general obligation debt as a percentage of our state limit is, in this case, over 70%. I'm happy to report that we are below 65%. Is that correct, Ms. Larson? So we're actually, for 2018, we've actually gone from 73% down to under 65%. The council's policy about limiting our borrowing is paying off, and you can see that with a little bump in property tax valuation, that we're getting that percentage down. So we're making progress, we're, we're no, we're probably still the highest in the peer group, but we're really close to the median than we were before, and that's, that's a very positive thing. I'd encourage you to read the rest of the report, you know, you may have seen it, you may have other questions, but I thought those were three really good examples that we could point out, and certainly happy to answer any other questions, Ms. Larson's here. We've, we've, once we got this report, we looked through it through, just to get a feel for where we are and how we do compare, but Trina had given you this presentation without the Taxpayers Alliance blessing on it, and virtually, they're the same numbers that, that Trina gave you at our first budget work session.
A couple of things that kind of popped out at me is, while we're saying peer communities, you know, three of us have universities, you know, across Eau Claire and obviously Oshkosh, that does come into the, the subject matter of PMS payments. We have a prison, I don't think others do or this size, so we've got those large state facilities in our communities that I think do affect these numbers, I think significantly, especially, you know, a payment for public municipal services. I think we've talked at length about what does the university population, the prison population do to, when we're viewed by, say, retail coming here, that, those numbers are rolled in, so income, income averaging, we show much lower than maybe in reality we really are, so I don't know if they can factor those things into this type of report, but I think it puts us at a disadvantage, or doesn't tell the complete story, so. Councilman Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had the conversation with Mr. Roloff. I think it's important to let our citizens know just where their tax dollars going, and this, this report, I think, does, even though it is from '16, most of it does show that we're pretty frugal with the taxpayers' dollars, and we're getting a lot of services out of those dollars. So just one question, is this report on the city website, Mr. Roloff?
It is on the website through the newsletter, because we put this on as an attachment to the September 14th newsletter, but it might not be a bad idea to just get it in a little higher-profile place. You got to, you got to dig a little bit when you're looking at the newsletter.
Right. I think that'd be a good thing, because again, that might, you know, we get very few questions from citizens during the budget, and even the budget hearing, we don't get anybody coming to the meetings, so I think it's important that we really emphasize this. I know there's several members of the media out in the audience tonight, because it really does reflect what this council, in the nine years that I've been on council, we've tried to do, and when you get into the customized report, it really gets into some pretty good detail of what we spend for fire and what we spend for police, and what we do in the basic spending per capita. So it gives a great opportunity for our citizens to really see that we're running a very tight budget, and we're, we're, we're getting a lot of services for that, and, because I, you know, some of us, I'm sure, maybe all council members got a little bit of email or phone calls when the water rate increase went out, so this is another opportunity, again, to tell our story, which I've been harping on that for nine years, so I'll continue, so thank you, Mayor.
That's all I have on that.
Seeing the lights turning on, we go to the next opportunity for citizen statements. Pam, did anyone sign up? Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one is registered.
Then I won't read all that in.
Mayor, can we go backwards for a second?
Sure.
Just finishing the council discussion. I'd like to see, now, I think this is the spot we can talk about the petition, right? I think it's, just see, maybe the, we go back to, to the bike pet and to the parking traffic review, just to, you know, maybe like we did with the parking on Oregon Street, maybe charrels would be better on West Haven than bike lanes so that we could allow some parking in that area because, you know, it is a residential area. And so we did that on New York Avenue. I think we put charrels and we put a few, you know, a couple of other locations. I think on Sawyer too, maybe. But anyways, I, not that we got to totally revamp the whole situation, but I think just a look-see would be a, a good idea. So I, I'd like to see it at least get put on as a discussion item.
And I would agree. I, I drove down there the day after that lady called me, and I'm making a quick judgment, but I think most of the neighbors there are, they're not teenagers. They don't, there's not any kids there. They're, they're more senior citizens. And I think when we say, you know, park around the corner and walk a half a block or something, I think that's a little unrealistic when you look at the majority of the people that do live there. And I will agree, there's a lot of speeding.
We'll put the petition on.
Not pointing fingers.
Because the, the action, you can't take the action tonight because it wasn't on, but it may be appropriate to refer to bike and ped, perhaps even sustainability, and see where it goes from there.
Yeah.
In traffic. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now we have council member announcements and statements. The first is creation of the Environmental Leadership Award. Councilmember Crowsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the council liaison to the Sustainability Advisory Board, and I was asked to pass this along. We're creating an environmental leadership award, and in beginning in 2019, the City of Oshkosh Sustainability Advisory Board will award an individual, group, or project for environmental leadership. These awards are designed to recognize those who, whose environmental leadership has made a significant contribution to the community and has had a significant impact on the environment. The SAB may also wish to honor other nominees for their contributions to the environment, such as lifetime achievement or honorable mention. A successful award program may be expanded upon in future years. The SAB, with assistance from staff and the Oshkosh Southwest Rotary Environmental and Beautification Committee, will market the awards to environmental and community groups as well as to the general public. Nominations are to be made by emailing the SAB general information email address, sab@ci.oshkosh.wi.us. The nominations must include the name and contact information for the nominee and the nominator, a brief five-hundred-word or less summary of the nominee's contribution or contributions to the environment, and no more than three letters of support and/or three exhibits, including, if applicable, a photo. The selection committee, which shall include a representative from Oshkosh Southwest Rotary, will make recommendations using the following criteria: environmental activism within the City of Oshkosh, participation over time, leadership contribution, positions in tenure, development of an innovative or model program or facility in use or being considered for use by others, leading or fostering a long-term initiative, making a substantial contribution to environmental protection or remodel of environmental hazards, and finally, leadership influential in achieving a documented substantial improvement in quality of environment. Will be taken applications from now till the end of January. In February, the applications will be reviewed, and then in March, we'll be awarding them at the council meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think you should plan to have that posted on the city's website.
Yep.
Okay. Next, we have Councilmember Mugiraro, who would like to report on the Rental Housing Advisory Board Inspection Program informational meeting that happened a week or so ago. So what's up, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Laurie Palmary is, is obviously the council liaison, but I just want to report back. It was a good meeting, very well attended by many different stakeholders in that, in that talk. So that was very good to see. Good presentation was put on. They, they were able to interact a little bit, and we had some, some good comments. We meet, the Rental Housing Advisory Board meets tomorrow evening. We're in this room at three-thirty. We will be taking up the discussion on creation of potential improvement districts and what the criteria should be and, and what the boundaries would be for those. It's an important part of that conversation, and if anybody's interested in attending, they definitely should. Tomorrow, three-thirty in this room. We're hoping to potentially make a recommendation to council in short order, and so that can come forward for, for our discussion as well.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a follow-up to that, there were several investor owners, landlords that we talked with who attended that, and in addition, that were new faces to the discussion. And I was quite pleased to see that we did have some other engagement with other folks in the community that hadn't previously been part of that. And they were expressing their appreciation for having that opportunity, and also they expressed that they learned a few new things as well. So I believe that was probably one of the better-attended public sessions with regard to this issue.
Okay, I will now turn it over to City Manager Roloff for any announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few memos in your packet. The first one had to do with getting a new vendor for our P-card program. We've gone back to JP Morgan Chase. Based on the service we were getting from the previous vendor, we felt this was a better deal for us. Mr. Urbans prepared a memo for me, and it's in your packet. The city hall meeting room scheduling, as council is aware, you approved redoing of our elevator, which is much overdue. After the meeting on November fourteenth, the elevator, the last person down that evening will probably be the last person using the elevator because beginning November fifteenth, the elevator will go dark for about six weeks. And we've looked at different locations, and council seemed to be leaning towards the Public Safety Building. We took a look at it, and with a very minor investment of about $4,000, we've redone one of the courtrooms that I think can accommodate you. It's not going to be fancy. Pretty much, it's going to be, you know, there's new carpeting there, but it's going to be fold-out, fold-out tables, some basic microphones, not a lot of AV capabilities, a little bit of AV capabilities, but not a lot. That'll get us through two meetings. The last meeting in November and the first meeting and only meeting we're going to have in December. The memo that came from Mr. Fitzpatrick, that's in your package, we sent it out to all the departments to, so that we make sure that every board and commission that normally meets on the second, third, or fourth floor of city hall has an alternate location. We can't just pick and choose which ones. Every meeting has to be ADA accessible, so everything's moving over to the safety building. There may be some meetings that we have with, say, site plan review that we may be able to keep here because they're not technically public meetings, but if there's a need, we're going to have those rooms available in case we need to accommodate a member of the public who may need to be there. But we'll know those attendees in advance, not unlike the council meeting where somebody could show up and we have to be able to accommodate them. There are two other rooms over there, and certainly Mr. Urban has said he welcomes any council member who would like to go take a look at it. The room's locked during the day, but we can get you in and just get you a feel for what it's going to look like. But essentially, a couple of tables to accommodate you, one table to accommodate staff, as you see here. And we'll have to make some other arrangements. I think what we're going to probably do is instead of having a designated department head here, we'll probably have this seat float throughout the entire meeting, much like the podium, so that you'll be able to hear from department heads. And they'll have to stay close and tight up to the front of the area. They'll get over it. They'll, don't worry about it. I'll tell them you don't bite. But they have to be there accommodating, and then we'll have a public podium as well. It'll be a lot different, but it'll kind of be, kind of going back to a little bit of the old days. So I think that's the best way to accommodate the public through that. And it sounded like council was leaning towards wanting it here at city hall, so, or in the city hall campus, so that if somebody shows up at six o'clock and says, where are you, we can easily get them over without them having to travel around the city looking for, for the council meeting. Any questions about that? Because I know that was an issue of concern to everybody. Otherwise, we do have the Oshkosh Corporation update. That's going well. The, you know, bids have been awarded. I think staff has had some pre-construction meetings, and things are getting underway, and those seem to be going well. We have the early absentee voting for the November election detailed here. It'll begin next Monday, and it'll go through November second. Friday, November second, we'll be open a little extra because that's the last day that we're legally allowed to be open. And then we're going to do a special hours on Saturday, October twenty-seventh, from nine AM to noon. So last day of farmer's market. Maybe we'll get some people out there, and people coming into city hall, if they're coming downtown, they can come and do it then. But those are the hours we have, and we took a look. We're probably about the middle of the road in terms of our, as somebody said, what's a peer community, communities that we surveyed. We're probably in the middle of the road. Some started this week. Some aren't starting until the twenty-second, but we felt this was a, a good number. And based on our track record of number of people that come in, we figure we'll get a good, a good turnout, go in three weeks. And any questions on that? I thought I heard somebody.
Mugiraro?
Yeah, no, I just had one quick question. The Saturday hours, is that something new we're doing, or has that been done before, and I just didn't know about it?
No, this is new.
It's a follow-up on a request, I believe.
Yep, I, I requested it. Other more progressive cities such as Milwaukee, Madison have weekend voting, and I thought we could be a leader of the pack for our size community.
Actually, I believe a request came from a member of the Winnebago County Board.
No, I requested with Pam, and she was gracious enough to take my opinion.
Well, whosoever it was, it was, it's a good thing. And it'll be interesting to see what kind of feedback and what kind of traffic flow we have that morning here at city hall.
We'll track the numbers, see how it goes.
Good. Thank you for, for trying something new.
Thank you. And in the, in the opposite category, trick-or-treat hours are the same as last year, same as they've been for a number of years. Five to seven PM on October thirty-one, so people can plan accordingly for that. Item twenty-three, Councilmember Mugiraro had asked about what was, what occurred from the, our challenge pledge to other communities. Mr. DeShane had forwarded me a report. It's not the most up-to-date. This was as of the middle of August. I, he didn't send me an update on this one. There was good response from other communities as a result of our challenge. Only one community, the Village of Ashwabanon, matched us in total with the $10,000. I'm not sure Janesville may have, but I really can't tell. It's, it's a little iffy, so I'm not going to give him credit if, unless credit is due to them. But Mr. DeShane reported that even though there weren't as many communities that, that truly matched our number, that it, it resulted in a great outpouring of support for this. And I think the mayor heard that when he went to the Chief Executives Institute, so.
Correct.
So the support was there. So I thought it was appropriate to report back to council how it's gone. If I hear anything more from Mr. DeShane, I'll get back to you on that.
One other thing, too, I caught, as I told you, the tail of a news segment on WBA, WBA, WBA went last night, and Senator Roloff was talking about the need to close the loophole. So we are getting support. We've had the support. Now, some of the senators and so forth are becoming very vocal about the need to get this loophole closed, which is our intention with.
Absolutely.
All the legislators.
And then lastly, I'm going to end the meeting on an up note.
You missed, you missed number twenty.
I missed number twenty. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. A month ago, we had a presentation on housing stock, and I wasn't sure if there was any feedback that council wanted to put this on a future agenda or anything else. We had provided the, you know, where we were with housing incentives and maybe the need to maybe tweak those a little bit versus the other issue was where are our housing stock opportunities for single-family housing? And we showed some of that as well. So if you'd like us to put it on a future agenda, or if you've got any other comments, certainly welcome to get any thoughts from, from council on that.
Councilmember Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I did, I liked the presentation. I liked the options that were given our citizens. I guess after tonight's presentation on economic development and industrial parks and the need to bring workers into the community, I think that bodes well in partnership in a way that we really need to stay aggressive with cleaning up rundown neighborhoods, clean up areas so that people can maybe build homes in the area. I think there was a slide that showed how many home lots were available. So I think maybe just keep counseling the loop of how it's going, what it's going, continue to work with HNI, to, to get the neighborhood associations going and to working in those neighborhoods to improve them and improve the housing stock that's available. And I know Rock the Block, there could be some issues there, I understand, Habitat, lost their.
Their staff.
Their staff. You don't have any now, right?
Well.
Nobody.
It's kind of on hold.
The two who are working on Rock the Block.
Are gone. So, but I like that program, so I hope that we can possibly move on with that if they get staffing by the spring when we probably are going to unroll it out.
Yes.
But I, I do think it's a, it, housing and the greater, you know, we always hear it, you know, people want newer homes or newer areas. And so we're very vulnerable to the townships that border our community because they have the land available, and the farmers are willing to sell the land and let them build a home on it. And so whenever a new subdivision comes in or the opportunity to, you know, it looked like we were going to have something being developed by the county sheriff's office. I don't know where that project's gone. But I, I just think we need to stay on top of housing options, especially if we're going to be promoting, trying to get either businesses to expand already that are in the Oshkosh area. Because one of the things they talked about was looking at quality of life, as the mayor brought up, and, and Mr. White from GOE DC brought the same thing up. A lot of businesses are already sold on the quality of life in Oshkosh and Oshkosh area. So we've got to find housing for them too. And I think a lot of them don't want apartments always either, which we have a lot of. So I think it was a good presentation. I enjoyed it, and thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I think it really, it, I think we all know, have known for a long time where the areas are that need to be stabilized, but I think it, it gave us the facts and the data to support our kind of gut feel, if you will. As a matter of fact, I looked at a, a property with the GOHNI people this, this afternoon. It's the one the RDA acquired, and, but it's, it's off of Washington on Monroe. The discussion was that with the Howard being rehabbed, with the YMCA, those neighborhoods are going to become more sought after because of the employees that will be at the Howard, at, at the Y. And this is a block away. That, that neighborhood, because of that, it, we feel it would might be a good investment for GOHNI to acquire the property and rehab it. So. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to kind of add and build on that, it does appear that there's kind of a buffered zone or a ring around all of that catalytic activity going on, and almost like a renaissance with something I haven't seen since I lived in downtown Indianapolis and the Cottage Home area. So, you know, those things are spurring, and we are seeing more fix-ups. And I think that's been dovetailing with our efforts on the inspections program and the Rental Housing Advisory Board and the efforts of staff to, you know, up the game a little bit in terms of those property conditions and that housing stock.
Okay, Mr. Roloff, I believe you have one more thing.
We, I do, but I want to make sure because this is going to be absolute end on an up note. Earlier in the year, I think it was Councilmember Herman had brought up the fact that the Winnebago County had done some videos in concert with a company that was more commercial-based. It didn't cost the county any money, and I think the challenge was, you know, see what you can do. We can do better. And you are absolutely right. We can do better. And, and I believe we did better. We have five videos. They have been put on our website. They're available. But rather than wait for, I'm going to tease you a little bit. I'm just going to give you one, and we have five meetings left in this year. Each and every meeting for the rest of the year, you're going to get one of these videos, hopefully a little bit of a teaser. They're about one and a half to two minutes. Isn't that right, Jake? So they're not real long, but I think they just have a real good story to tell. They're based on five of our six strategic plan goals. Effective government wasn't too exciting, so we didn't go with that one. But quality of life, infrastructure, public safety and health neighborhoods, and economic development. The first one, we knew the mayor would love this. We went with quality of life. So this is the one we're going to show tonight. And after that, you're welcome to, to adjourn the meeting, but figured we wanted to get this out and encourage people to look at them on our website.
Oshkosh, Wisconsin, a thriving hub of business and activity surrounded by beautiful waterways, is located in northeast Wisconsin, about halfway between Green Bay and Milwaukee. It is a progressive city that offers small-town friendliness with big-city features and a high quality of life for all ages and interests. Two major health centers Two major health centers call the city home. The Oshkosh Area School District gives students the place to build a strong education, and the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh and Fox Valley Technical College provide competitive higher education opportunities. Local favorites, such as the public library and museum, Riverwalk, Grand Opera House, and dozens of parks, provide residents and visitors a chance to enjoy the city's charm, culture, and personality, while large events bring in thousands of visitors for conventions, festivals, and more. Opportunities for entertainment are around every corner, indoor and outdoor, during any season of the year. The city places a strong value on inclusiveness and community and is proud of the strong relationships built through service organizations, nonprofits, and neighborhoods. For both longtime residents and newcomers, it is clear to see why so many are proud to call Oshkosh home.
I'm just dropping the mic now.
Are you the voiceover?
For this one.
Yes.
They'll get better, right, Jake?
Great job.
Jake, you got a voice for radio.
Yeah.
He said radio.
Very well done.
Great job, guys.
I'd move to adjourn.
Any a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.